All right, so I'm going to call, this is Ryan Anderson, Chairman of the Board of Finance. I'm going to call to order the public hearing for the budget for April the 24th, 2019. Just a quick, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance and then I'll walk through kind of the flow and what's coming down the line for the actual formal meeting on the eighth.
So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Consistent with prior years, what we do here in this public hearing is we just give an overview of the proposed budget that will be voted on on the eighth of May in this same room at seven o'clock. So I'll make a reminder at the end of this as well, but the intent here is to walk through some highlights from the budget. And we'll also have Melissa Mack come up and just give some detail on the town side budget. And then Sue Davis, the Chairman of the Board of Education, will come up and speak to the Board of Education budget. And we've got others from the Board of Finance and Board of Education, as well as the Board of Education Administration to be able to answer questions and hear comments that folks have. Just a quick round of introductions. So from the Board of Finance standpoint, we have Chris Childs, Tracy Echols, Eric Harrington, Dr. Ann Huntington, Jerry Mahoney, Brian Cost, Michael Stevens, and we're missing one of our alternates, John Stevens. I know we've got, what did I say? John Sullivan, sorry. And then from, we've got Melissa Mack in the front. From a selectmen standpoint, we've got some other Board of Selectmen members here in the room. I don't think all of them. Sue Davis is here, Chairman of the Board of Education, and Mike Seppco, the Vice Chair, as well as other members. I don't see everybody here, but we don't think to go through all those introductions, but feel free if you guys would like to when you get up. So what we'll do really quick is just start off like we've done in the past with just a revenue assessment of, as you guys know, quite a bit of our revenues come from the state. They also come from use of our fund balance and other sources. So we'll talk a little bit about some of those first, and we'll talk about kind of the state of the state. And then, I'm hearing a little bit of echo, and then we'll jump into the actual expenditure budget. So what you can see here is state grants over time. You can see we are up 0.85% from where we're actually going to end the year. The second column to the right is where we are going to end up, which is a grand total of 12.998 million. These are in thousands. That's up 2.6% from where we were in 1718. We had originally budgeted a bigger decrease, though. You can see that there. We had budgeted a decrease in state revenues of 3.15%. That didn't happen. We got additional education-related revenues, bringing us up to $6.7 million there that we didn't anticipate. I'll talk a little bit about fund balance and the utilization of fund balance later, but you guys may recall in the prior period, we used $2 million in fund balance last year, some of which was to be used for capital expenditures. We had had to get the library up and completed, but we also used that to try to insulate the effect of those cuts from the state in state aid. So now that we're getting that back, that'll come back, some of that will come back into our undesignated fund balance and our position there, and you can see where that is as a percent of our total. From a revenue standpoint, you can see here our local fees, licenses, and other income. That's really permits, that'll be conveyance fees, that'll be interest revenues that we have from, you know, our cash that's sitting in the bank. That's also from sweeps of finished capital projects, and that's really driving the increase there year over year. That's 670,000 and change that you see on the top line. That's really driven by, we had capital projects that we funded in prior years, they completed. We had extra, we had anticipated higher budget for those capital projects, that didn't happen, so we swept those back in and we used that as revenue offsets to, you know, decrease the tax burden in future periods or this period. Fund balance, that's what I was talking about before. Last year, we used $2 million in fund balance to support the budget. This year, we're anticipating or proposing to use $400,000 in fund balance. That's why you see a big decrease there. We had had a bond premium from our most recent bond issuance. We had about 152,000 left over last year. That went away. We finished off the use of that, and so that's why you see a decrease there. And then you can see the state grants up, and that's what I talked about before, that 839, that's the education-related grants, non-educated education-related grants, which is up from a budget-to-budget standpoint year over year. And then the tuition there is minor, but that's for agri-science tuition and other tuition for students that come into our district from outside. And so at the very bottom, you can see what we have as the shortfall to be funded from taxes. You can see last year, we needed 40,461. Now we need 41,613 under the proposed budget, an increase of 2.85% that we need from the residents of Suffield. Some of that will come from new construction and new taxpayers and new properties. Others of that will come from increases on taxes on existing property. And you can see the effect from a mill rate standpoint. You may look at that and say, well, why isn't the mill rate going up? On the very bottom, it was 29.32 last year, now it's 28.72, a decrease in the mill rate. Well, how come? Well, we just went through revaluation. And so many of you guys would have got envelopes in the mail that showed, hey, my house was worth X, well, now it's worth Y. And so that, in most cases, is an increase. And so because of that increase, that's, that reason is why you have the mill rate actually reducing there. This is a quick exhibit, just to kind of drive that home. You can see last year, we had a net collectible grand list of 1.4, almost 1.4 billion. We had required taxes of the 40,461 that I showed prior, and that was a mill rate of the 29.32. Now, if we looked at it outside, real growth, right, non-reval-related growth, so new construction, it would be new personal property in town, additional car taxes, things like that, we would have gone up to approximately 1,397, you'll see there. And under the current budget need that you saw on the previous page, we needed 41.6 million. That would have, in a normal, non-reval year, increased us to 29.77 on a grand list, I mean, sorry, on our mill rate basis. The new grand list, based on revale, is 1,449, and we still need those same level of taxes on the far right, which is what gets us to the 28.72, which is a lower mill rate. Everybody will have a different tax impact for that, though. It's very hard to say, oh, everybody will have a tax increase of, you know, 2% or 2.5% or you're just not going to be able to do that. Everybody's going to be different because of the way the revale works, where people's street codes got changed and that changed the value of their house, even though they made no change to it. And then somebody else's code may have gone down, so it could have had variable effects on all that. Just to give a quick pie chart on the budget and the revenue side of our budget and where our revenues come from, you can see 70% from property taxes of the residents of Suffield. Last year, that was about 69%, so pretty close. The education and state-related grants, running at 23%, that's consistent with last year. We were exactly 23% in the prior year. One will say, well, we had an increase in some of the dollars. We also had an increase in our budget. So it's still 23% of our overall revenues come from state and federal grants and education-related grants. Our fund balance is down. That utilization is at 1% versus it was 3% last year. As I showed before, we used that $2 million, now we're only using the $400,000. And then we have local fees, license, other income. That's actually up because of those, the sweep of those capital projects that got done, higher interest rate on our money, that sort of thing. So just wanted to give you a quick picture of the trend of our expenses overall as a town over time. As you can see, it just kind of, it's a summarized version, but we have the Board of Education, the General Government Ops, our debt service load, capital expenditures, miscellaneous transfers. That's when we took money from, let's say, fund balance and moved it into our OPEB, our other post-employment benefits fund, because it was underfunded, or our insurance fund, because our, where we pay our own insurance for our claims for our employees, both the education side and the town side. And if that gets underfunded, we put, we put in money every year based on the amount taken out of people's paycheck for their premium, but if it's not enough to cover the claims, and we have some high-dollar claims, that thing, that account can go negative. So in other years, we've had to kind of fund that. And so that's what you'll see in that miscellaneous transfer. And then we have a contingency amount, which has been lower, but you'll see for this coming budget year over here, it's, it's up a bit. And I'll explain why in some of the upcoming slides. But just generally speaking, you can see the increase to all of these amounts year over year. From a Board of Ed standpoint, it's up about 9.1% over a five-year period, town side about 11%, et cetera. You can see the debt services, we were going down a bit, and now we're coming back up because we finished off using that bond premium and we're anticipating, year to year, we're anticipating a hit for those fire trucks that are going to be delivered this month. So the expenditure budget, just to get into, just to show you some of the percentages, from a Board of Ed standpoint, we're going from 34,807 to 35,548, an increase of 741,000, 2.13% increase year over year. Debt service, an increase, 71,000. That's, we're getting a, we're paying less for the bonds that are rolling off, but then we're adding for the, an assessment for those fire trucks. That's why that's up 2.21%. Capital expenditures are up, 455,000 year over year, a big piece of that, and I'll get to it later, is the Remington Street Bridge hit on that. And then we're also increasing our spending on roads. Last year, we didn't spend very much on roads because we had done a lot through bonding in prior periods, and we had shifted that spending really over to the library to get it done. Well, now that that's out of the way, we can go back and make sure we're funding our roads the way we should. The transfer to OPEB, we don't have that this year. In prior periods, we've had an amount that the actuary determines that says, hey, this is how much you need to fund your other post-employment benefits fund. And that makes money on investments that that's in, and it's going to be used for insurance, you know, medical costs for retirees from the town side and the school side. And one of the things that we found from that, based on what the actuary shared with us, is, hey, you've built up enough money there that you can start to pay, the income that it makes will be able to pay for the claims against that. And so because of that, we're not necessarily needing to fund that any longer, for the time being. That could change, but for this year, anyway, we're not having to fund that. Last year, we had a transfer to the insurance fund of half a million dollars. That was because it was underfunded. We don't have that this year. Now, one of the things that we did, we still are, we do have a deficit in our insurance fund, but what we did was we increased the town side and Board of Education budgets for that piece to kind of fund it as we go through premium increases. And then we had a transfer to our CNRE. That was, we took money out of fund balance last year, a little bit, 250,000, to fund future capital projects and really get a better return on our investment in our capital non-recurring fund. And it, we didn't do that this year. We didn't elect to do that. And then, as I said before, we increased our contingency from 360,000 to half a million dollars. And one of the reasons behind that is, as we looked at the, and I'll show you this a little bit later, the requests that came in from the town side and from the education side were higher than what we are proposing here. We realized that that could create a burden by putting a challenge out there to saying, hey, we want to cut that increase down and have an increase, for example, in the Board of Ed of 2.13% versus what was requested of 3.3%. We're saying, hey, we know that's going to be a challenge. We want to increase our contingency in case there's anything that's unforeseen, because we know we're planning, we could get a new student in town that needs to be outplaced, that can be a big hit. We want to be ready to try to accommodate that, and so that's why we increased the contingency up, to try to support that, if that were to occur. And then general government operations, that's the town side, that's the police, the fire, et cetera. You can see an increase of 449 on that, 2.87%. So total expenditures for the town going up to 59,304, an increase of 957,000 or 1.64%. This just gives a little pie picture of where the spending is. It's pretty consistent with prior period. Board of Ed, 60%. Town operations and contingency, 27, 28%. Capital and debt service, we're sitting at around 12. In last year, it was 10, 60, and 30%. This will just give you a quick picture of what was requested and where we would have been and the action that was taken by the Board of Finance. So based on all submitted budgets and what came into us, it would have been a required tax, tax dollars, not again, an increase, but the required tax dollars from the citizens of Suffield, an increase of 13.73%. We, as a board, have taken a policy really to say, we're comfortable increasing taxes, property taxes in town at a level in line with inflation. There's a lot of folks that may be on fixed incomes, retire, you know, pensions, that sort of thing, that don't get adjustments higher than inflation. And so our policy is really to have increases up to, or including, including inflation, but not beyond that. So 13.73 is, is obviously, would put us above that. And so as we looked at it, we said, all right, we can't do all the capital projects that have been submitted. We need to cut some off of that. You'll see that took us down by $3.1 million right there in total. We have a Board of Education side was, it ended up being 412, but it was really a half a million dollars that they had to take action on. The reason it looks like 412 is because we added dollars in for the health insurance, but that just goes right to the health insurance line for them. And so the net effect of all that is the 412, but it really was a half a million dollar challenge that the Board of Ed will speak to a little bit later on some of the things that they're looking at to address that. Selectment side ended up being net down 12. We had, again, some things, action that we took around that for the police department side of things. We had reduced the police budget by 50,000, but again, the same dynamic came into play with health insurance, and that was an increase to the budget, so that netted out there. Debt service and contingency, up 315. Again, that's just the increase because of some of those fire trucks, as well as the increase that we added to get our contingency up to half a million. And then you see some interest and then fund balance utilization that I talked about before. So all of that got us down to where we are, where we are today. So I want to kind of talk about our savings, right, our rainy day fund, and just kind of share a little bit about where that is. You can see, we put both of them together here. It's the general fund, undesignated fund balance, and then the CNRE, because we've been taking dollars and moving it to the CNRE to get a better return, but those are dollars available to us within the town to use for future capital projects. And so you can see this balance was up in the 20% range. We've been trying to work it down. Last year, we took it down to 13.5%. That was because we took a big hit on that. We took that $2 million really to try to insulate some of those changes, those cuts that we were getting from the state. Now, those all didn't happen. So if you kind of said, okay, well, let's fast forward this dollar amount and what it really is now, we're probably going to have an extra 800,000 that we didn't, that we anticipated taking from fund balance, that we won't. But then we're going to take 400,000 under this budget. So this number will end up being about 14%. And under this proposed budget, if everything plays out the rest of the year, and it might not, but if everything plays out the way we're thinking at this point in time, we would, under this proposed budget, have basically a rainy day fund between CNRE and general undesignated fund balance of 14%. Now, we, as a board, are looking to be between 12 and 15%. That's where we'd like to be. So we're right in that sweet spot there. The key message here, though, is we don't have a lot more to use. So we've been using this, and there are a lot of uncertainties from the state. We could get, we, there's been talk about us getting hit with a share of teacher pensions. Now, that hasn't happened. We're not forecasting for that within this budget, but it could happen. You guys have heard all the stuff in the news about tolls. You guys have heard about, now, that wouldn't hit us as a town, but that hits the taxpayers of the town. Capital gains tax on town, tax on property houses over a certain amount, a state tax on your cars, right? All those things are being debated because they're still in a hole down in Hartford, big time. So we have used our fund balance and we've built it up, which is good. Other towns don't have this, and so they've had to take more drastic measures when the state cuts the aid that's, you know, distributed to them. We can absorb a little bit here, but we're getting down in that danger zone because we're down about 14%. We can't, we don't have very much more to go. So I just want to share that with everybody here. And then the other thing is, from a bonding standpoint, as you guys know, we bonded quite a bit. We have the school bonds coming off. That'll give us some capacity to borrow, but we, as a board, have never had the, you know, the motivation to borrow to cover operating cost. It would likely be borrowing to cover capital expenditures. We have some things coming down the road within the town from a, you know, we've prior authorized renovation on the town hall. We've got a prior authorization to move forward on bonding for those fire trucks, which are being delivered. Now, we haven't issued the bond on that, but that's something we can do. We're talking, there's talk about a town garage. So there's a lot of different things coming down the pike. There's some renovations, actually, of this building that's being talked about. That'll be a pretty sizable amount. And so those are some things that candidates, that we have to fill that void when the school bonding comes, the high school bond comes off in 2021. But, you know, that's going to be, we're going to use it for those types of things, and it's not like we're going to have that lever to pull to try to insulate us from cuts at the state level. Pension and OPEB liabilities. So based on the actuaries and our audit reports, you can see this is unfunded OPEB liability and pension liability, just to give you a picture of that. We have, we didn't show this last year, but we wanted to put it out there just so people could kind of see that. Now, there are changes in assumptions on returns on those, the investments within those funds. Also, they change assumptions and estimates on how much will be needed here based on folks and when they retire, lifespan, the expected lifespan on people. Once they retire, all those types of factors come into play. But as of right now, we've got an estimated $16 million liability that we're going to have to fund over time. Now, we fund that through amounts that we, that are put in based on paycheck, you know, withholdings and that sort of thing, but over time, we're going to have to eventually pay that. So that's something we want to keep track of and know that that's a, that's a liability to the town that's out there that we're going to have to fund at some point. Moving on, just on capital projects and debt service, just to give you a little trend on that, you can see as a percent of our budget, it's running between, anywhere between 9.5% and almost 13% is the high over the last five years. This year, it's anticipated to be about 12.07%. You've got capital projects of 3.883 million. That is, you know, projects that we're going to fund now and actually do now, and then you've got the debt service. Those are projects we did before, and we're paying off, we're paying the interest on them and principal on those borrowings that we did before to get projects done. Gives us a grand total of 7.2 million. As a percentage of our budget, 12%. And we'd like capital to stay, remain between 10 and 12%. That's where we want it to be. If we sacrifice capital to cover operating budgets, things will start falling apart. We don't want that to happen. You know, it's, we've made it a point to say, hey, we don't want to sacrifice capital. We can in a particular year, in a tough year, we may make sacrifice in capital, but then we come back and have to make up for that in order to maintain the infrastructure that we have within the town and responsible for. Just from a debt schedule standpoint, we just wanted to show you kind of how things are looking in future periods. You can see this big falloff right here. So this is this year, 3.2 million, almost 3.3 million. It's an increase. We got this 175,000 is what we put in as an estimate for those fire trucks, because we know they're coming in. We could bond for them, but we want to package it as a part of a bigger deal. That'll, Melissa will talk a little bit about that later on, of an anticipated town meeting, probably in the summer sometime, where we'll come back and kind of have a package that we're going to want to move forward on. But for now, we know we're going to have to start paying on those fire trucks as soon as they're delivered this month. And so that's one of the things that we, we put in as additional financing charge. But you can see two years out, the high school drops off. And so that's where we'll have an opportunity. We'll probably bond now, we'll get a bond premium like we did before, that'll help bridge the increase in cost, and that will pick up and make this number increase, probably pretty close to, or maybe a little bit under, but closer to where we are now in annual debt service cost. Just some highlights on the capital projects that we're funding this year. Like I mentioned before, it's just some of the big ones, and they're in the back of the green book that you guys have. If you look at the very last pages, you'll see the rundown of all the things that we have for capital. But we have roadwork and sidewalks and all that kind of stuff for about 1.4 million. Remington Street Bridge, 640,000. And that's our share of doing that bridge. The rest of it's covered by federal funds. And we get those funds, we'll have an actual, in the town meeting, an authorization to spend more than the 640, but we're getting it back from outside sources as we go. Our share of the bridge will be 640, and so that's what we've got in the current budget. We've got some renovations to the middle school from a roof standpoint, and there's a wing that's being adjusted for band, I think, was the key part of it, where it's just not adequate right now. So that's a key part of one of the changes we're making there. So that's just middle school renovations. I thought you put those two together because it was pretty significant, just to call that out. And then we have just all other school projects. So you can see the total capital spending that's going towards either the high school, middle school, McAllister, Spalding. There's money in there for Chromebooks for students, that sort of thing. It all sums up to just over, a hair over a million dollars. And then we've got drainage projects for 200,000. These are just the biggest ones, kind of going top-down. And then you've got a lot of other little things that you'll see on that last page that are, that make up our full capital spend for this year. So that just gives you some real highlights on the budget, both from the revenue side and the expense side. What we'll do is we'll give Melissa a chance to kind of go into a little bit more detail on the town side, followed by Sue in the, in the school, and then we'll open it up to questions and comments at the end of that. So Melissa, I'll hand it off to you.
Thank you for coming this evening. I want to start out by saying that this, this budget on the town side is pretty straightforward. I think the theme for the next year is stay the course. We have a lot of great things going on on the town side. The town employees have been working really diligently to do things more efficiently, to improve customer service, and we're going to continue on those themes. I want to start also by thanking the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance for supporting us and continuing with some of these initiatives that we've started. And I also want to really sincerely thank the Board of Education with our interim superintendent, Mark Winsler, and our assistant superintendent, Michelle Zouawi, and business manager, Bill Hoff, for being open to conversations about shared services. Because when we find ways to do things together more efficiently and utilizing the resources that we have, everybody wins. And so thank you for being such wonderful partners. Okay, we're going to start out with our process. The department heads provided the, to the, to the first selectman and the finance director, a $16,299, $298 total budget versus fiscal year 1819. This was a 653,000 increase, 4.17. Consistent with last year, with prior years, Debbie and I go through every single line item in every single budget. We meet with the department heads. We talk about expenditures. We talk about things that are contingencies, things that we can perhaps do more efficiently, et cetera. By doing that, we were able to move over to the Board of Selectmen-approved budget, which was 16,085,290, which was reducing the department head requests by 214,008. Again, in comparison to 1819, an increase of 438,942, 2.18. Then we presented that budget to the Board of Finance. As Ryan mentioned earlier, they made some decisions to increase the amount of medical insurance funding. And so our budget on the town side increased by 60,000. They also challenged us to manage the police overtime budget by $50,000. And so we've ended up at a 2.87% increase over last year, $450,000 increase. Not a lot of change has gone into the budget, and so we're just, again, staying the course. The budgetary challenges, consistent with prior years, state funding. I think this is the year, at least since I've been involved, that we've received the least amount of information from the state at this period. We really just don't know what is going to come out of the state of Connecticut. So we've, we've positioned ourselves to be lean and agile and able to kind of respond to whatever is thrown our way. Open union negotiations, which I'll talk about in a second. Utility increases of 71,000. What this reflects is, we had a water provider that failed to charge us for several of our fire, of our fire hydrants for many years. That company was acquired, and they, in their due diligence, they realized that we weren't being charged. The good news is, we're not being retroactively charged, but now going forward, we will be, we will be seeing an increase in some of our, our water charges. And just as a little side note, we pay over a half a million dollars every single year to, to have water available in our fire hydrants. And so that's kind of a big, a big nut. Another challenge is, that's been spoken about, I think, by Ryan, was the rising cost of medical insurance. The town side experienced a 16.6% estimated increase of over $251,000 approximately. The open union negotiations. We have the town hall and the library, both expiring at the end of June of 19. The police expired about a year ago, which means we will most likely have some retroactive pay to absorb into this current budget. The fire contract, which we've received, reached tentative agreement, I expect that to be completed shortly. And then the dispatch contract, which had expired in 2016, had been in arbitration, and we are nearing completion on that one as well. Camp Memorial Kent Memorial Library. I am delighted to report that the grand reopening will be on June 29th of 2019. And so many people to thank to get, who have contributed to getting us to this process, to this position at, at this point in time. It will be a wonderful, a wonderful reopening for the entire town and especially for our very patient employees who have been working in cramped quarters and continuing to keep our library services going strong. However, with an $8 million renovation comes expectations. We're going to move back in and we are excited. We'll have eight additional staffing hours per week to assist with desk, desk coverage. We are expecting reductions in operating expenses by now only having one renovated and efficient building to operate. We are expecting reduction in annual renting, rental income because of course we were paying for swing space. So that's $33,000 that will come back to the town. And we are doing a continuing review for IT efficiencies and looking for overlaps with the Suffolk Public School system. And this is possible because in the last year, we've begun sharing services, sharing with the schools in the area of, of IT. And our IT director, Becky Ossinger, has done an amazing job of taking a first look at all of the places where we can save money. It's being reflected in this budget and we look forward to more of those efficiencies. However, we wanted to wait until Kent Memorial Library was situated back into their permanent housing before we looked at kind of making any changes. So we'll look forward to more efficiencies there. The senior center, another just very minimal staffing change was we added a 10-hour-per-week employee to, to assist with lunch prep, workshops, and dishwashing. So other than that, we have not added any employment, any employees on the town side. And in fact, in the Department of Public Works, we had a retirement of one of our highwaymen, Tommy O'Brien, after 30 years with the town highway department. We will not be refilling that vacancy. We are now going to be hiring three instead of two seasonal workers to help us with plowing and lawn mowing because that's where our, our largest needs are. And we think that with the staffing we have, we can get by with our other really important highway projects that we do on a day-to-day basis. We are also not filling our public works facilities director position. And I, I would be remiss if I did not point out the amazing job that Chris Maticek is doing as our facilities manager. He has jumped in without a lot of training and, and just amazingly picked up that library project, bringing it to, to completion and picked up all the other balls that we kind of left him in, in public work. So kudos to, to Chris. This will result in a savings of 144,331 in just salaries plus benefits by not filling those two positions. We're taking a different model where we are going to be utilizing independent contractors on a project-specific basis. So once we have a large capital project, we'll be making sure that we staff that project with someone with the expertise that we need in that area. And this is a different model for us. And we are also, we, we are already seeing it in the completion of the library project, that it is a much better way to get a better quality product done at the end of the day. And then back to shared services. I look forward to continuing discussions with the schools and our new permanent superintendent for reviewing shared DPW highway facilities with the Suffolk Public School system. So if there's efficiencies and collaboration to be had there, we are going to explore that. Some operational structure changes. Non-union salaries, so every, every town employee that is not a member of a collective bargaining unit, we are seeing a $42,000 decrease in overall salaries. Again, not filling the public works facilities director, et cetera. Shared services, as I mentioned, we are sharing IT with the public schools. We are also, that resulted in reducing contracted services and not hiring a separate town IT director. Consultant fees. We have increased our use of, of consultants. And so $37,350 overall increase, including some contributions for the shared IT. Also, we share an economic development consultant with East Grammy. And this has been a really, really great collaboration. We're doing more, using economies of scale with CIRC, and it's been a great experience. And so the net savings is we've decreased from last budget, $4,740, and we are seeing improved services to the town. So this is a model that we are, are happy to have in place and we're looking for more opportunities where we can kind of do more with less. As Ryan alluded to, we are anticipating a bond issuance in 1920. If you look over to the left, approved bonding that has yet to be issued includes the $2.8 million of fire trucks and apparatus. I saw a picture today. They are red and they don't say Suffolk yet, but I'm very excited that they are on their way. We have several of our firefighters are down there doing inspections and they should be making their way here in short order. The $4 million, 385 approval for town hall renovation, that project is moving forward. We have our architect and our contractor have been selected by the Permanent Building Commission, and the project is moving forward. So that's, that's progress. So 7, 7 million, 185 is, is really ready to be, ready to be issued. Then, as we mentioned, we, the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen could consider putting in the 640,000 for the Remington Street Bridge, which is the local share, which is our local contribution. The rest of that project is funded through, through grants. Then finally, Ryan mentioned a few pending projects. The Filer Place redevelopment, highway garage relocation process, which has been going through several iterations. You'll be seeing more on that to come shortly. Where hopefully we'll be making some decisions there. And then we could always decide to do some additional road construction if we wanted to make sure that we get up to an amount that is worth issuing. We, we, we like to be around more than $10 million, somewhere between probably 10 and 12, makes it worth our while to pay the fees for issuing a bond issuance. So that's, that's really all that's happening, I think, on the, on the town side. I'm happy to answer questions at, at the end, Ryan. Is that what you'd prefer? Okay. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Welcome and good evening. And my name is Susan Mercic Davis and I am the Suffolk Public Schools Board Chair. I want to thank you all for coming out tonight and to listening to both the town and the school's budget to, to hopefully better inform you as to where we're spending our money. I'd be remiss, though, if I first didn't thank the district's leader, Mark Winsler, Michelle Zouawi, and Bill Hoff. They have been crucial and instrumental in, in moving us through this year and presenting this budget, which we feel is a good indication of really providing great services for our children of Suffolk. I also would like to thank the Board of Education. All the members were very crucial in really going through this budget and diligently scouring it to see if there was any ways that we could save more money in a time which obviously is financially difficult right now. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna briefly discuss the highlights of the Board of Education proposed budget that was presented to the Board of Finance on April 1st. And at the conclusion of the presentation, Bill Hoff, myself, and Mark Winsler will answer any of your questions that you may have. So let me start by saying that in January, the interim superintendent presented a budget to the Board of Education, which represented an increase of approximately 4.8% over last year's budget. The Board of Education then dived into it over a series of workshops and meetings. And we, as, as well as the district leaders, were diligent in scrutinizing the district needs, effectively managing grant expenditure, and dissecting areas, as I said, where efficiencies could be maximized. We made every effort to improve relationships with the town, which Melissa Mack has just talked about, which also realized cost-saving measures to the town through those shared services. And that did result in the Board of Education unanimously approving a 4.3% increase to the budget in March. I also would like to state that the board was confident that by approving this budget, that that would not negatively impact any students' learning in Suffolk, Connecticut. However, we did make it clear that any further reductions to the Board of Education budget would result in a direct negative impact on children's education as it would, would more than likely result in teachers and support staff being cut. So this pie chart that's coming up is, I think, a really good visual depiction of the Board of Education. We believe it is a lean budget. If you look at this, essentially 83%, and I'm gonna say that again, 83% of the Board of Education's budget is salaries and benefits. All right. So I wanted to be clear that the, the Board of Education is presenting an extremely lean budget when you look at the minimal increases that we have had to put in this year. So one may ask, and I know many people do, why do the Board of Education costs continually seem to go up? Well, again, the answer is quite simply, there are always increases to, to the wages of our teachers and our employees. There's increases to health insurance costs. And there is the overall increased cost of things such as instructional supplies and materials that we need to teach and support our children. So as you can see here, the contractual salary increases and the insurance costs alone account for 2.77% of the overall budget. And I want you to remember that, that it's 2.77% of the overall budget increase is just in salary and healthcare costs increases. Okay? And that number's going to be much less at the end of this presentation. The other major driver of this budget is special education. We have added some crucial staff members in response to areas that we determined were not adequate to service our special needs population. We also saw that special transportation, special ed transportation and tuition costs has risen this year compared to last year due to additional outplacements of children with special needs. I will expand on this in a little more detail in a couple slides further on. So what I do want to say, though, is that even though we have, we, we had to this year add some increases to our budgets, there are still reductions to our budgets. And those are here. What you will see that the major decreases that we'd like to highlight here to the budget are we are reducing 3.6 teachers at the secondary level. We are also, we also moved $166,000 of salaries into grants. Okay? And that was to further defray the cost from the budget. Okay? And take it away from the town. So those are our major decreases to the budget. We also actually, before I move on to the special ed again, we did realize another $132,000 in retirements because as of right now, we know that four staff members are retiring at the end of the year. So let's get back to special education because what you will see as, as the main driver of this budget this year is special services. As you all may be aware of, special education expenses are rising in every town in Connecticut, and I believe every town in this country. Suffolk is no different. Special education has been identified as a need by this board, by the district's leadership team, and the community. We have had a lot of transition within leadership and within staff in this, this department, and we take ownership of that. However, it has become abundantly clear that there are areas within this department that have needed to be addressed in order to better serve all our children in Suffolk. Okay? And so as previously, previously said, special education expenses are our main drivers in the 2019, 2020 budget. And it is the hope of this board that by investing in special education now, we will see savings in the future. So, so I'd just like to kind of recap this, this slide here so that you can see the enormity that does come into our budget, that we are mandated by law to serve this population, and we should. It makes everyone better. And if we serve these kids better, I promise you, the neurotypical children that share their classrooms will also be served better. So 14.5% of our students are special education in our district. Okay? 18.3% of the total budget is special education. All right. 20, 22.4% of the total budget, when we add special education and pupil services, I neglected that line, but I'll give you the summary here, is 22.4%. Of that, 1.89% of the total budget increase is in special education. And that's excluding salaries because that's in, in the overall total of salary increases. And how that, that kind of pans out is that we have, have asked for a 0.94% for additional staff. And as I had said before, we are seeing a rise in tuition and transportation that go to our children who are outplaced. All right? And so again, just so that you have a little idea of what these additional staff members are, the district leaders have determined that we do need a secondary special education supervisor that will be utilizing and serving six through 12, as well as our transition program for our children, 18 to 21. Okay? And, and at that time, we, our special ed director was overseeing that. And we were seeing that there were some inconsistencies, not great oversight of services, and there was potentially a lot of problems with that. So we decided that was emergently needed to, to better serve and, and look at efficiencies within our department. The other thing that you will see is that we added a board, board certified behavioral analyst, or a BCBA. Those are highly educated professionals who deals with the most extensive needs students within our, within our school system. And again, we, at this point in time, we only have one that is under our, our budget. And they oversee the entire district. That is inadequate, and therefore we feel we need more because that population is rising in our district. And again, I, I do want to say and, and reiterate that by re, that by investing in these services now, we are confident that we will realize savings in the future. And, and how will we realize those savings? I believe we'll realize those by decreasing litigation costs, decreasing outplacement costs, better serving all of our students, especially those special needs students, which will again allow us to avoid outplacements, which are extremely costly. So I did spend a little time on that, but I think it was important to really address that. So we've talked a lot, or I've talked a lot, about the, the cost to the town of the Board of Education and of our school system, which, which again, I believe is a positive investment to any town. All right. However, the district also utilizes strategies to defray costs to the town. And grants, which is what is depicted in this, this slide, is a way in which the district has attempted to defray some costs to the town in an attempt to decrease the cost of our overall budget. In total, Suffolk Public Schools utilizes $1.8 million in both state and federal grants to offset our budget. And again, that's a large number. $1.8 million in state and federal grants to offset our Board of Education budget. I'd like to tell you some of the items that are paid for within these grants in our district. They are the salaries of approximately 32 teachers. They are used for payment of Suffolk students who go to magnet schools. We have to pay for those students' tuitions. And those are funded through our grants. All right? They also, and that's about 30 students or so. We also are using these grants to fund support staff positions. Okay? PARAs, academic support positions, things such as that, which only enhance students' learning in the classroom and help support our teachers. Then you also have things such as instructional supplies and library books amongst, amongst a plethora of other things. So again, I just wanted to point out that if we lose, one thing I wanted to point out is that if we lose those grants, we will have to absorb those positions. Because as I said, one of the biggest numbers that, that is, to me, a bit shocking is 32 teachers' positions are held within these grants. So if these grants go down or we lose them, we have to reabsorb them into the district. But we believe that we wanted to offset the cost to the town as we could as long as these grants, grants are being funded. And that's what we did. So additional revenue to the town. This slide depicts educational revenue that goes back to the town from the Board of Education. So we don't just ask for money, which I think a lot of people think we do, which, which we do, but we also give back some money. All right? And I think sometimes that goes unseen. So I'd like to just- So I'd like to just kind of give you a little overview. The educational cost share is the amount that the state contributes back into our district, and that goes to the town. Okay? We have a very active ag-science program in Suffield, which we are extremely proud of, from which we receive revenue from the state for things such as students' tuitions from other towns who attend our schools for that ag program. So yes, the Board of Education budget is costly. I'm not going to deny that, every town would say that. Okay? However, as a result of the educational revenue, the total projected revenue increase, okay? That the town will receive from the Board of Education in 2019-2020 is approximately $900,000. So I'm going to say that again, that I want you to remember that number. We are bringing in money that's getting returned back to the town, and it's going to approximately account for $900,000 this year. This coming year. So, one area of interest, and I think Melissa Mack, our first select woman, did a fantastic job, but I would also like to emphasize is that over the past year, with the help of our superintendent, Mark Windsor, the district and the town have collaborated to share services in an attempt to also decrease and defray costs to the town. Mark Winsler, Bill Hoth, and the first select woman, Melissa Mack, worked at re-establishing a relationship and then working collaboratively to share such things as IT services. IT services alone from the Board of Ed side has resulted in a cost saving of over $77,000 in addition to that $900,000 that I just talked about in the previous slide. Okay? We also are working on Department of Public Works and maintenance, and how we can better share those services. And there is always the conversation surrounding human resources in that collaboration as well. And I would like to say that we, as a Board of Education, are pleased and excited about this renewed partnership and dedication to share services to the town, and we believe that we will realize even more savings in the years to come, which I think is fantastic and really should be applauded. So, anyways. So, just to let me summarize, that because the Board of Education and the district went through our budget and scrutinized the district's needs, which is what we do for the Board of Education and what is needed to best serve children of Suffield, we do believe we effectively managed grant expenditures, and we really did look for ways to save monies. We did unanimously approve a Board of Education budget of 4.3% or $36 million approximately, okay, to that budget in March, and we presented that to the Board of Finance. However, through our constant monitoring and revision of cost savings because a budget is fluid, we have further realized that we have additional savings primarily through health insurance and other adjustments such as the turnover vacancy ratio projects. And so then we adjusted our budget slightly to be at 3.5% or approximately $36 million. About, yeah, a little bit less, 36, 25, 989. All right? So again, we brought that number down. Again, we steadfast stand by our decision and our statement that any major reduction to this number will result in teacher positions being cut. So, at the April 15th Board of Finance meeting, the Board of Finance approved a reduction to the Board of Education budget by $478,119. That was a lot, or so we thought. Okay? For the next week, the district and the Board of Education was diligently trying to determine how to reduce that budget by $487,000. Amazingly, this Monday, the district was notified by the state that we would be realizing approximately $175,000 through excess cost reimbursement. Okay? So essentially, this means that the state actually told us they were giving more money back than originally was projected or thought. Okay? Also, the district modified some budget assumptions on the turnover vacancy rate and excess cost share savings, resulting in an additional $103,000. So because we got money back from the state at the 11th hour, and I mean that literally at the 11th hour, we were able to use that $175,000 plus the $103,000 that Bill Hoth really did aggressively go after to defray the cost of the overall cut to the Board of Education budget by the Board of Finance by a total of approximately $279,000, producing, but still producing a remaining deficit of almost $200,000. So, we went back to the drawing board yet again, and we spent a very large amount of time at our most recent meeting, diligently going through a list of what can we possibly cut that won't impact our students. And $200,000 is still an incredible amount of money. So, what the Board of Ed came to a general consensus is, is that what we might cut if this budget is passed on May 8th, is that there was a consensus to eliminate funding for, from the district for K-5 field trips. So let me just, every child will still go on a field trip. We're still sending them on field trips, it's still a vital component of their education. However, the district used to fund, I think, about $15 a student for field trips. We no longer feel that we can do that, and so we have decided that we're going to eliminate that. We also reduced some monies in maintenance funding as well, which accounted for about $55,000. And then we really pondered over what do we do with the additional $131,565. And I will say that at this time, the Board of Education has reluctantly decided to include a pay-to-play activity fee to defray the cost of the Board of Finance cuts to the budget. It is the board's belief that by implementing the pay-to-play fee, which I would like to say many surrounding towns already institute, that we would not have to cut any teachers' or support system, or positions. And so, as we had said before, and as I continually say here, it is our belief that if we cut any teaching positions, programs, or support staffs at this time, this would have a negative impact on the education of the children of Suffield. And so we have decided not to do that, but rather to recoup that money through an initiation of a pay-to-play fee. So in summary, and I thank you for bearing with me on this, at this point, due to the reduction of the Board of Finance to our education budget, if nothing changes, the Board of Education budget would be increased by 2.13%. And if you go back, I think you remember, I threw out a number of 2.77%, and that was what was needed to fund the changes of our staff as is, just with their salaries and health insurance increases that are mandated by their contracts. And that would increase our Board of Education budget by $740,000 and $638 from 2018-2019. So thank you. And we will take any questions.
So what I think we'll do now, we've got a couple folks with mics that'll be able to carry those around. If folks have a question, raise your hand, and make sure you state your name and your address for the record, and then we'll kind of either answer them through, from a Board of Finance standpoint, Melissa will be here on the town side, and education folks for any questions on their budget.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Linda Stevenson, 1470 Mapleton Avenue. First of all, thank you for an excellent handout. I love being able to follow along in the handout and see exactly what's being displayed. I had a question about the special ed. Let's see, I believe you came up with a 22.4% of the total budget is special ed. How does that compare with similar-sized towns, like I think we've used East Granby or Granby in the past? And what kind of maintenance for $55,000 is going to be cut? And again, thank you for the handout, and thank you for cooperating with the shared costs. I think that's really important right now, and kudos to the boards in town that are helping with that. I know it's difficult. Thank you.
Hi. Oh, sorry. I want to answer the questions. I'm Bill Hoth, the business manager for the schools. In terms of the 22.4%, I don't really have any actual numbers of what other districts are, but I know in talking to other districts, it's very similar. The percentage of students is in the range of other districts, along with the percentage. Typically, the number is 20%, but as over the last few years, those numbers have been going up, so they've been creeping up into the lower 20s rather than just 20%. In terms of the maintenance projects, there was a couple things we did. We have, we had in our budget $150,000 for projects, we're reducing that by $30,000. Again, as I've said, and the board understands, we, you know, those projects can be delayed, put off for some time, but you can't put them off forever. You have those, it's just, there's just slowing them down in terms of making sure the schools are maintained properly. But I do want to ensure everybody, one of our commitments, and Larry Plainer, who's the facilities director, and I, our commitment is that we will maintain the schools properly. And Ryan had talked about the contingency going up. That's one of the areas that we are, you know, if we had an emergency, we would go back to the town and say, hey, we've got it. We will not let the schools go downhill just because we don't have enough money. We will make sure we maintain the schools properly. Again, it's more of a delay of some of those things. And the other one we're, is a project to put glycol, which is antifreeze, in the high school heating system to prevent from problems with freezing that we've had. We've done some maintenance on those, so we're hopeful, two things we need is a warm winter, which helps prevent that, but we, you know, we didn't have any issues this year because of some of the work we've done. Again, it's something we would like to have because we think it would be preventive, but we think we can also live without it. We've lived without it in high school for 15 years, so we can wait another year.
Thanks. Melissa Finnegan, 50 Cedar Crest Lane. I'm just going to read from my phone because I wrote a statement, so.
So comment, not a question?
Comment, please.
Yep.
I was happy to see that we finally have a budget from the Board of Education that is actually providing additional programming for our students. Unfortunately, Superintendent Barassi took an unthoughtful approach and eliminated so many support positions in the district that they're trying to bring those positions back, but much of the damage has already been done. We need to fix our special education department so that regular education can also improve. This board has done its due diligence, and they have gone through this budget with a fine-tooth comb to fix what has gone terribly wrong in the last few years. Unfortunately, we have not seen the improvements that we have wanted academically because we've had five superintendents in 10 years, which has caused us to have no consistency and high price tags for interim positions and new hires. I think we owe it to the Board of Education and to the new superintendent to give them a budget that will include more than just salaries and benefits. Because sadly, due to the teachers' union, the positions and people that could be eliminated, which looks like we're not doing, but with this reduction, aren't always the ones that should be eliminated. We need to allow the new administration to make improvements that they see fit to put Suffield's education back on the map. I have three children at three different schools in this district, and I am finally seeing some consistency and progress. And I think that right now, we need to provide the financial support to move us even more in the right direction. We all need to take responsibility for the irresponsible hiring that's taken place over the years, and we need to put our support into this Board of Education and into the new superintendent by approving the new budget amount that is being requested without further cuts. Thanks.
Thank you, Melissa. There's one question back in the back.
Hi, I'm Jen Bombard. I live at 6 Whitfield Way. First of all, I want to thank all of the volunteers of both boards that are present here today. I understand that a lot of time and effort go into being a member of the board and in its unpaid position, so thank you for the time that you put into our town. I'm not here about pay-to-play, I'm actually here about the message that I believe the Board of Finance has sent to the town of Suffield. The first message I believe you have sent is that you don't trust the Board of Education who is elected by its citizens, or the administrators that were hired by the Board of Ed who crafted a thoughtful budget. The second is I don't believe you do not, you are showing you do not value Suffield Public Schools' teachers or students, and I think you are also showing that you have no interest in growing Suffield Public Schools. Melissa mentioned the turnover in our administration, and I do believe that our results lately have been a result of that, but it's also because of years of shoestring budgets that Suffield has put forth. And if you look at our test scores right now, I think you see you get what you pay for, and I think our children and our town deserve more.
Thank you. There's a question up here.
Good evening. Alex Fraser, 1440 North Street. And I have some comments, and then I want to make, first of all, thanks for everybody on volunteering time on both boards. I was a Board of Ed member many, many years ago, and, you know, I really appreciate the effort everybody has. Comments, first of all, are on the meeting itself, right? I think it's an oversight not to have this meeting videotaped and made available on Cox Public Access.
It is videotaped.
And will it be aired on public access?
It's being streamed, livestreamed.
Okay. Well, that's great.
Yeah, you can be replayed as well.
Good. The other thing is looking at other sources of revenue, right? And I think it's time that Suffield really needs to follow the lead of what some of the schools, or some of the towns in Massachusetts are doing, and that is payment in lieu of taxes negotiated with the nonprofit private schools that are in those towns. Town of Andover, for example, instituted a pilot program against three private schools, biggest one was Phillips Academy, brought in an additional $1 million in revenue to the town. Their revenue formula was one that was derived by looking at what Boston, Cambridge, and other cities are doing, which is taking what would have been the expected tax assessment of the private schools, and then assessing a tax fee of 25% of that fee. It's something, obviously, it's negotiated. I don't think this town has ever thought about entering into these type of negotiations. Clearly, Suffield Academy is growing. It is no longer what it was originally, when it was originally founded, where First Church of Suffield donated all of the land for the buildings at a rent of, I think it's $100 a year for several hundred years. So I just think it's time for everybody to open their eyes to additional revenue opportunities. And certainly, with an additional $1 million coming in, then we wouldn't have the same situation that the Board of Ed is being challenged with, with continual reductions. The other thing that I think needs to be communicated is what is the value that Suffield is getting for the cost per student? When I was on the board, and again, this was many, many years ago, the cost per student comparative in the state, we were down in probably the bottom 20% of per pupil expenditures by the town, yet our educational test scores and value was extremely high. I think we've lost that vision and that communication, and I don't know where we stand right now. Perhaps the members of the Board of Ed could share some insight on that.
Yeah, and it's also in the book, there is a page in the handout that talks to per pupil costs, there's an exhibit on that, I believe, partway through it. But if, do you guys want to speak to that per pupil piece in the, in scoring? I think what you're asking.
The only thing I can answer is that we are currently 98th out of 169 towns in terms of per pupil spending. In our DURG, which is similar towns, for the last, I believe it's 10 years, we've ranked between 12th and 14th of the towns in our DURG. So again, we're not down near the bottom, we're not, but we're still in the bottom third or so.
So to your point about the Academy, I think that's interesting, should be explored. I've been on the board I've been on the board for over 20 years, and I remember when I started, there's like 165, I think, school districts in Connecticut, and we were like 164 or something like that in per pupil spending and getting whatever results we got. And now we're 98, and about 20 years later. So we've been spending, we've been increasing our per pupil costs in Suffield significantly higher than the state average. Otherwise, it would have been impossible for us to go from virtually dead last to the top. And just as it relates to this year, the data that we got on the Finance Board said that the number of students that would be enrolled in the school system in the upcoming fiscal year is about 4% less, 80-something kids, than they thought would be enrolled last year, and there's actually less than they thought. And there's 3% more staff. So the cost per, before any of the reductions that the Finance Board made, was going up about 8%. We thought that was a lot, which was the primary reason that we made the recommended reductions that we did.
Yeah, my name is Scott Gilmarten. I'm at 759 Hale Street. I have two questions. In the presentation made by the Board of Ed, reference was made that the special ed population in town is rising. Is there a particular reason that that's happening, or is this just a general trend? That would be my first question. Second question is, what has been the total decrease in students within the school system over the past five years? And thirdly, just a comment, I think that gentleman's comment about pilot payments is something that the town definitely should pursue. And I don't know if this is exactly on point, but I do think that some of the fire apparatus that's being purchased has a specific application to buildings at Suffield Academy. So I think that pursuing pilot payments is something that the town should definitely take a look at.
Yeah. Thank you, Scott. And I think we've kind of talked a little bit about that around the periphery and not gotten as formal or serious about it, but I think it's a very good point. Just to your prior question, page four has a little bit of that student information. And then I'll let you guys answer the special ed trend information.
Thank you for that question. I think when you look at special education and you see it over the course of a series of years, you know, or decades, you do see a trend where it's rising. And one of the reasons why it is rising is that we are identifying more children. And more children with needs are actually coming to public schools. We have chose to include children of all abilities to have access to public education. And so when you see that, and when that was put into place, I don't have the exact year, but you started to see an increase in children with special education. That is one account. The second account is we are having, we are doing a better job of identifying children and identifying them earlier. And when you do that, that is best practice, and with early identification, you get the best return on your gains. So yes, we are seeing an increase. I will also say this, I believe there are families moving into our town because they see Suffield as a town that invests in their education and a town that possibly could provide their child with more than some other towns that have less financial need. So that's another reason for increase.
Okay, go ahead.
So just over the last, since 2014-15, 2014-15, we had 2,400 students. We're projecting 2,200 students for next year. But one of the things I will point out is if you look at the data, the cost in terms of regular ed and the number of FTEs and all that associated with the regular ed programs has actually decreased over that time period. What has gone up, and the cost that's gone up dramatically, is the special ed cost, and that's what's driving the increases.
I just want to follow up and be clear. So students, the reduction of students that you just mentioned, is it across all grade levels, or was it specific where maybe you could cut, say it was all in second grade, and you could cut four second grade teachers? Or was it spread out over 12 grades, and it meant like a reduction of eight students per class?
Unfortunately, they don't leave in class size increments and come in class size increments. It varies. So one of the challenges you have is exactly that. They leave, you know, 200 students, if not all, you know, like this year, next year, we have a very small entering class to high school, but the year behind that is not. So you can't just adjust one year and get rid of a bunch of teachers and get a bunch of them back. It just doesn't work. They don't leave in class size increments. We do look at that class size constantly, both now, in the spring, looking forward to next year, when we make decisions about whether adding teachers or needs. But again, they don't leave in class size increments. You can't just say, okay, you lost 200 students, okay, that's 10 teachers. Make that change. It doesn't work that way.
I think there was, go ahead. Do you have a mic?
Yeah, I'm prepared. Wendy Metzl, 173 Kent Avenue. And I just want to say thank you to the Board of Ed and the administration and anyone else who is supporting the special education needs of our kids. I have a son who graduated two years ago, and I can tell you that there were a lot of instances where there was just not enough oversight, there was not enough education on the part of the teachers, there were not enough people to give him the services that he deserved and required, was required to receive by law. So I don't want anyone to think that special ed is trying to get something that it doesn't deserve, because when you get these kids the support they need, it just makes everybody else that much better, and they can go on and do great things. And I do want to point out that the people who did work with him did a wonderful job and were able to move him forward in life, but there were many, many instances where people were scrambling to try to figure out how to provide those services, because there just were not enough people with that knowledge base to go ahead and make that happen. So I applaud you for giving such attention to the special ed budget and to the teachers and the staff that also need that, and the parents and the kids who just really can only benefit by spending just a little bit more money to go ahead and make life better for everybody. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. I think there's a question over here.
Hi, my name is Marcy Lukamach. I live at 46 First Street. And when I was in school, and probably when most of us were in school, you went to high school where you lived. But that's not the case anymore. There's many different options for students to choose from. And I'm going to use just a small statistic that I have. My son sat at a lunch table with eight boys every day from fourth grade to eighth grade. And in eighth grade, we heard the discussion, where are you going to high school? It wasn't assumed that any of those boys would go to Suffield High School. And in fact, five of them, five out of the eight, left and went to other places for high school. So when I see a budget like this, I'm not sure that this is a budget that makes our high school and our school system as competitive as it needs to be, because that is the reality of schools nowadays. They have to be competitive to keep the market that they have in town and to bring in other students to our town. That's just the reality. We have magnet schools, we have lots of good private schools in the area, and we see that happening. And I think some of the reductions that you're hearing about in student population could be partially due to this. So I think we have to think clearly and long-term, not just in the short term, that this is a budget that's appealing right now. But how are we going to make our schools continue to be competitive? Because without them doing this, we're going to be in the same boat every single year.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other comments or questions? I see one back there.
My name's Carl Cassangino. I live at 205 Halliday Avenue West, and I had some comments to share and perspectives. I am also a teacher in the system. I was at the Board of Finance meeting when the Board of Ed budget was introduced, and at that time, it was brought up the famous statistic that a lot of Suffield folks are proud of, that we were at the very bottom in the state of Connecticut a couple decades ago. And I remember specific arguments superintendents made in ensuing years, that you cannot attract quality teachers over the long term if you keep at those levels. And in fact, our salaries were not competitive. We have inched up. We are at 98, which still, I believe, in the bottom half, even though that wasn't how it was described earlier. And that, these are tough questions we need to continue asking if we are to remain competitive, which was just addressed by the person who spoke before me. Also, it's been discussed that the population has been going down, but again, I've heard at several meetings as if our staff has not been reduced. Let's review a few facts here. In the last two years, at the high school or middle school level, there's been a reduction of one English teacher not replaced, one math teacher not replaced, one unified arts position not replaced, one social studies teacher not replaced, one special ed position not replaced. These are the facts. Soon, it will be that between the high school and middle school, three world language positions not replaced, three less than what we were at just a few years ago. And that was after some expansion in world languages, for example. Why? Because of strong programs, because of great teaching, because of kids that are excited about learning. Speaking about excited about learning, our kids are. A year ago, we had the Niask report with the high school. So at that time, we did a lot of work to prepare for it, which included making a video about our high school. So our students made this piece, and we had to go out, and we interviewed kids. This wasn't scripted, right? So if you walk around a high school and you interview kids, what are they going to say? You might imagine you get all sorts of answers, and one might guess that some of them will be negative. They're teenagers, they're tough to please, right? So we asked them, and what did they say again and again and again? They're so proud of their school. What is it that gets them excited? Diversity of opportunity. They constantly commented on that, that I am not only taking your standard courses in the core academic areas, but that I have all kinds of options. And in order to support that, we need a robust budget. That's been developed by our board, supported by administrators, and also the opportunity of extracurriculars that are at the core of our culture in America, sports, arts, et cetera. And these are important things, and if the decisions are made about, for example, pay-to-play, I hope that we have strong data about its impact on our kids. If there's no impact, and that the same number of kids are participating, and that is supported by parents, great. On the other hand, we need to be having a very watchful view on how that impact occurs, because that will impact the morale of our students and how everyone is seeing our schools and the spirit of Suffield High School, the middle school, our elementary schools, all the way through. That's my comment.
Thanks for your comment. Something you want to share?
So to that point, one thing that I'd like to do is go onto the state website, and they have something called Profile and Performance Reports, and I've tracked that data over many years. To Scott's question earlier about how many students we've lost, over time, we peaked at about 2008, we had about 2,600 students. And now, next year, we're going to be down about 2,100. So about 500 students have been reduced. Now, if I go to the same report and look at the head count, the number of employees in 2008, it was 365.61 in total. Last year of data that's available right now was 2018, 364. So there was virtually no change in head count over a 10-year period with 500 fewer students. Now, last year, just roll it forward a little bit, last year was a flat year, basically, as far as student adjustments. This year, there's an additional 10 positions being added net. There might be some reductions, but there's some additions, so it's a net 10-person increase. So to say that there's been reductions is simply not the case. There has been a somewhat steady overall head count on 500 fewer students. So what's the impact of that from a per-student basis? Well, since 2008, when we peaked, you know, our student counts dropped 20%. Our education budget's up 29%. And that means the student, per-student increase is 61% higher. So we're, you know, over 17,000. I think we were something like 10,000 per student, 10,600 per student. So, you know, that's the trend that we are dealing with, and as a board, we have to try to produce a responsible budget that's fair to all people, including the taxpayers of this town. And, you know, so, you know, I take a little bit of offense to the comment that we don't care about education. I care about education a lot, but there's limited resources, and I think we've done a good job at balancing. And by the way, there's been, as far as I can tell from the Board of Ed presentation, there were no reductions as a result of our adjustment. So that's all I wanted to say on that.
Go ahead in the back. Sorry, Tom. I'll get you.
Tim McCluskey, 170 Marlborough Drive. Just to piggyback on that right there, I can understand there's been no change in head count over the past 11 years from the data that you're looking at. Unfortunately, when you look just solely at numbers, what you don't realize is that the nature of education has changed, and what colleges and parents and students were expecting 11 years ago could have been handled, possibly by those numbers and by that ratio. But what's expected today and what, quite honestly, our children deserve today cannot be looked at just simply as we have the same number of staff but a less number of kids. So what you're, really what you're asking to do today is you're asking the teachers today to do far more than we were expected to do 11 years ago. So it's not simply just looking at a number of, here's what it cost, here's what we had. You have to look actually at what education is, and that's where I think you look at the Board of Ed and the administration, the budget they're presenting. That's why they're asking for more, is simply because education is more today than it was yesterday, I'm sorry, yesterday or 11 years ago. So sometimes we've got to go away from the numbers. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Tom up here? Tom's been waiting for a bit, and then I'll get over to this side.
Tom Frenay, 489 Warner Town Road, West Suffield. Couple comments. The handout for tonight's meeting was posted yesterday afternoon on the town website. It would have been better if it could have been out a day or two earlier, and I urge the next time, next year, you do try to get it out a couple of days earlier, because one day of looking at it just is not really enough.
Fair comment.
And obviously, you have plenty of time for the May 8th meeting, so I hope you'll do, you know, get it out early and make sure people have time to see it. As I said to you the other night, I think the contingency number is too high. 10 years ago, it was in the $150,000 range. That's probably too low today, but 500 is a pretty big number compared to the budget. It's a 300% increase in 10 years. My other comments really have to do with the education budget and how the Board of Finance handled it. I was shocked when you guys voted to, mostly guys, voted to reduce it by $478,000. I didn't see that coming. I didn't, you know, from your comments when the Board of Ed made their presentation, the meeting after that, it was, I think, several meetings in a row, you talked about a bunch of different things. But, I mean, I was, I've gone to almost all of your meetings, and there was nothing in any of the conversations that I heard in the public parts of the meeting that said, oh, we've got to cut them by a half a million dollars. The normal process is you find a little bit of the Board of Ed budget, and you find a little bit of the Selectman's budget, and you reduce them both some amount. So I was really shocked. That's the biggest decrease in a Board of Ed budget that I know of in the last 20 years, probably ever. So the problem I had with it is nobody really clearly articulated why. And you were trying to figure out how to balance the budget, which is what you have to do on your board, but it really wasn't clear to me exactly why you wanted it reduced by that much. I thought the Board of I thought the, I thought the Board of Ed did a good job at presenting. I thought you guys had some good questions. There was good back-and-forth dialogue. It wouldn't have surprised me to see a reduction, because that's normally what you do when you, when you get to the final, you know, question of what the budget can be and what you want to ask of taxpayers. But 478 was a lot more than I expected, and I think you're making a mistake there. I went to the Board of Education's meeting earlier this week where they struggled with it and talked about a bunch of ideas of how they might meet the, meet the reductions. And they didn't, you know, they, they came to some consensus over it, but they didn't vote on them. They talked through it for a couple of hours. And Sue Davis gave a summary and talked about it earlier, and I, you know, it pretty much reflected the, the struggle they had. But, you know, two of the things that they're talking about cutting are some money in maintenance. Well, we know how good Suffield is at maintaining things. We're not, we're terrible at it. If we don't maintain, we don't usually maintain stuff very well. As a result, we end up paying a lot more down the road. So it's not good to do that. And I know, I know the Board of Ed doesn't want to cut maintenance, but that's kind of the next step before cutting, cutting positions. And they struggled also, particularly with the pay-to-play part of it. And a lot of good conversations there, a lot of, a lot of information. And my reaction is, for 130,000 or $100,000, whatever it is, it's going to cost them a bunch of money just to maintain that, just to keep track of who's paid, who hasn't paid, whatever. So there's some overhead in, in doing it in the first place. And in the end, my reaction is, we want to encourage kids to do after-school activities. It's not just sports, there's other activities after school. And, you know, either way, taxpayers are going to pay for it, whether you cut it out of the budget here and add it to a fee at the school, or you take it out of the school and you put it in here. It's much more efficient to pay for it along with the town budget. So why not do it that way? Why not? I just don't understand why you're going to a system to cover that money, which doesn't even go back to the activities. That was one of the, the things that was brought up at the Board of Ed meeting, is that this money wouldn't necessarily even go to the, back to the sports or the other activities that it's, that it's being charged for. So anyhow, I don't, I think, I think that's a bad, a bad move, and I, I just don't think it makes sense. And the other thing that was kind of a, a comment that I, that I think was ignored or not listened to carefully by the board, and I think was, was one that the superintendent said in one of, at one of the meetings, which is that one of the problems that Suffield has, that it hasn't really addressed very well, is what we do for our better students. As this woman said over here, there's a lot of choice for, for people in terms of going to other schools if they want to. Suffield Academy, Loomis Chaffey, Cathedral in Springfield, or one of the, one of the magnet schools. He said there's 50 Suffield kids going out of district to, you know, to other, to other towns. These aren't special needs kids we're talking about, and these aren't kids coming into town. These are 50 kids going out of town because what they find here isn't good enough. And that worries me. So that's, that's, obviously, the Board of Ed can't deal with that, and the special, special, special ed needs all in the same year, but that's something we've got to face. We've got to have a school that actually appeals to the better students, too, the ones that are trying to get into the, into the good universities. And I, and I think we've dropped that, and goes back to what, what Mr. Cassengino said, is that we've got to, you know, we've got to continue to have good offerings of courses and activities that keep the best students in town and offer them the best possible thing, and that will make everybody improve, everybody at the school. So my, my reaction is, I think you should cut your, the amount that you're taking away from the schools in half, and make up for it by, by the extra money that you've got in the fund balance. That's money that's not being used for, for, for anything other than bond rating, and it won't make much of a difference if it's $200,000 different. So I put 200,000 back in the Board of Ed budget. Don't, don't go to pay-to-play and, and don't take away the, the money that, that's being tentatively talked about for, for maintenance of the schools. So anyhow, that's my story. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. And, and what I would say, and then I'll let any of my other board members come up, but what I would say is, when we start the process, our intent is not to go and say, hey, let's go and cut the request of the Board of Ed. The reason it was talked to last is we wanted to hit everything else we could possibly before we got to that. So we went through capital. We tried to cut as much as we could out of that. We went and threw all that, we had to make sure the insurance was right. We knew we had a deficit in the insurance fund. We needed to remediate that. That was part of those increases that went along with, which we kind of, we forced those increases on Board of Ed and, and town side, but those increases, it's nothing that they can do with. It's not money that they can use for anything that they would want, because it's going to just, it has to be used for insurance because of those rates that we increased. So we get that. I think the struggle that we have is, given the looming issues at the state and that fund balance, I hear what you're saying about fund balance, and it's, it's, you saw the slide where it's down percentage-wise. If we keep dipping into that, we're not going to have the levers to pull when the state hits us. And then second, once we put it in, because of the minimum budget requirement is, is in place, that's an instant hole. We put, take 200,000 from fund balance, put it there, that's 200,000. We've got to put it there every year now, going forward, from fund balance or from other, some other source, new revenue sources, right into the, so we're trying to protect the town and smooth it from the roller coaster ride of using fund balance to offset operating costs. So that's, that's just my, at least my response to your comments. Very good comments. Thank you, Tom. Did you want to share something, Tracy, on this?
Just clarification on the contingency, just clarification on the contingency and why we increased it to 500,000. The state budget has not been passed, so we don't know what to expect from this new state government. Also, we want to impose discipline on the budgets at the town side and the Board of Ed side, and we want the, the town and the Board of Ed to reduce the amount of contingencies that they embed in their own budgets. And I would say excess conservatism. So we increase the, the contingency that would be available both to the town and to the Board of Ed in case there is an issue this coming year. If, for instance, in maintenance or in facilities with the Board of Ed, if a boiler blow, you need a new boiler, you can come to us because we've added that in the, in, in the town, in the town-wide contingency budget. So really, we want to make sure that on the town side and at the Board of Ed side, that you are good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. And just in, in terms of the conversation we've been having with the Board of Ed throughout the course of this year, I'm surprised, Tom, that you didn't see, didn't understand where the cuts were coming from and why we didn't determine that there should be a cut. Number one was the enrollment was down, you know, and, and administrative, administration and staff is up. Size of the school, it's about 60, I believe, students leaving the high school, but the real decrease is in the middle school, where the class size is around 14 to 15 students per class size, which is very small. So we questioned that, and we really frankly did not get good answers. On the excess cost reimbursement, we've been talking about that since the beginning of the year, and I'm really surprised that they found that money now, because on February 15th, when I emailed the Office of Fiscal Analysis, they said Suffield would be getting a 75.7% reimbursement of, to the tune of $787,000. So I'm very surprised that you're finding this out now. So it's just looking at the, the board, the turnover numbers, looking at some of the assumptions in the budget, asking the tough questions, and not really getting disciplined and good analysis from the board and from the, and from the staff. So as you saw from the recent Board of Ed meeting, they're not cutting staff, the programming has not changed, the assumptions changed, and they're looking for another $130,000. And I would challenge the Board of Ed and the staff to, to uncover maybe the budget items, look through them, challenge the assumptions behind those, because I think even with some of the turnover numbers that were cited, there's more savings to be, to be had. I also think that students, money doesn't solve all the issues. It's good leadership, and as you've heard from the board, we've gone through quite a number of superintendents, and I'm thrilled that there is a superintendent who's been hired, will start the year in July 1st. And I'm thinking with good leadership, this superintendent will be assessing all the programs that, that we offer, because we all want a good, good education for our students. We want a class act educational system. And so I'm just, I'm, I'm just hoping that this new superintendent will bring some great leadership to the school and will really challenge everyone in the school system to create the best possible school environment. And I'm very encouraged by that. But I think when we see good leadership in Suffield, we will see the students staying and not going outside.
I would just like to make a couple of comments. One, I agree with you, Tracy. Leadership and good leadership is at the crux of any good business, any good program, any good family. So I completely agree with you on that. And one thing I can say, and I think the board does support this, and this was given a lot, I would give a lot of credit also to Mr. Windsor. We were in a situation which was unfortunate. I can't speak for the other superintendents. This is never one that we want to deal with in terms of what occurred in the past year. However, we dealt with it, and we brought in a extremely experienced superintendent that led us down a path in which we could thoroughly look at our programs independently with no dog in the, in the race. I commend you for that, and I think we all have learned a lot about that. Number two, with his leadership and also some of his direction, but mainly because of this board and how we have united together and really focused on what is best for all children here, we have, I believe, found a leader in Tim Van Tassel that is going to come in here and not only unite this district, but I am confident unite this town, which is even more important. We have a divide, and we need to unite it. So those are my two points. The third thing I'd like to talk about is your reference to the middle school. I will tell you, the middle school is built on a teaming model, and best practice, if you do any research, looks at numbers in a teaming model, and what that teaming model states is that class sizes due to the social emotional needs within that group of students in this day and age, and with all the pressures coming at them, that they need class sizes of about 15, which is exactly what Suffield Public Schools has, and that is best practice and will hopefully, okay, and I believe confidently, lead our young children to be great individuals and, again, achieve greatness through Suffield Public Schools. So that is based on research and best practice.
One, one last comment I want to make to this, too. Oh, sorry, I'll get you in a minute, is I was at that Board of Edu, because I'm still going on Tom's piece, but that Board of Education meeting where you guys worked through it, I think you guys should be commended because you did a great job. And the administration for bringing you options that you could work through. I know there's been other years where it's been, where we've talked about a cut to the increase, and it's been, don't know. We don't know, we're going to have to find it out later, and that's been kind of the information we have. So you guys as a Board of Education, I would say, should be commended for kind of working through that and having that meeting. You're right, it was a long meeting, and they assessed, and they had some very good dialogue on the different things, and what was the right balance of how to go after the target. And with the specific to pay-to-play, because I'm a parent and I've got kids in the system, I look at the state of the state, the state of our town, the fact that we have non-diversified revenue streams in this town. If you think about it, it's tax residents. There's not like we have this commercial tax base or new businesses going up that we can tax and don't use services. Other towns have that, we don't. So when I look at it, I mean, I've paid, you know, for my kids to play in sports going up through, through the years and activities. I don't mind paying a little bit. I don't mind, as a parent, paying a little bit. It's still less than I'd pay privately for it. I get a good, it's a great deal, it's the best, best deal I would get through the schools, you know, in the amount that I have to pay. And I know that they'll have, they had talked about having kind of a hardship, you know, ability for people that don't have the ability to pay and that sort of thing. And so I think it's a good option and something that the board should be commended for bringing up. So I don't, I know there's others on my board and others in town that have a problem with it. I don't. Now, before we hit another question, I want to let Mark, Mark was coming up, so I want to let you speak.
Thanks. I'm Mark Winslow, the interim superintendent, and I feel compelled that I want to clean up a couple of things here because of some references that were made recently. We, we talked about the uncertainty of state budgets and so forth and so on. We received the memo from the state on April 12th of how much money that we were going to get. And, and that was the day before vacation. That was a vacation week, and on Monday, that, that Monday, that's how we found out about the $175,000. So I want to make that clear, because I think there was kind of a veiled inference that we're hiding or something like that. Nothing could be further from the truth. And I'm looking you square in the eyes. All right. Thank you. I'm speaking. Secondly, there was a number before put out that we lost 80 students this year. That's incorrect. The number is 60. And the third thing is I'd like to reiterate, there is a message here that you said and you said, and I will repeat it. 50, there, you add 50 kids to the number that you have, that you're servicing, because you are paying for 30 of those kids to go to other schools, because you're paying tuition for them. So take your bottom line, and that, there's 20 kids going to Hartford schools, which you don't pay for, but your kids and their parents are giving you a message with their feet. They are going elsewhere. I am a retired superintendent. This is the 11th time I've been an interim superintendent. I have no dog in the race. I am an honest, truthful man, whose integrity, professionalism, and ethics are paramount to me. I come into every district as I've come into here to try to help you move forward. But I deal in facts, I don't hide things, and I lay it out. One of the things I showed at, when I presented my budget, is that all of your grants, not all, but some of them, are drying up. You're not taking as many choice students from Hartford. Your fund, we, at the last meeting, the finance, business manager said, we'll probably have, as of this now, for the year close, $1,200 left in our balance, in our budget. $1,200, not $150,000 or $200,000 that you could put in to offset next year. So those things are beginning to dry up. That's why things have been able to be funded. That's why things were able to be funded before, because you had your choice students, you had 600 or 800,000 in that. We're going to use, I believe, almost all of that so that things can get funded to educate kids. But that's going to dry up, and I'm not going to be here next year, but it wouldn't be surprising to me, you won't get a four-point, if, you know, seeing what I see, that budget could go up double the amount, because you're not, all those positions, or a lot of those positions, won't even be funded by grants. So my voice is a little reverberating. I don't usually get angry, right? Because I think you focus then rather on the tone rather than the message. My message is this: Wake up, Suffield. Kids are leaving your school system because you cannot sustain budgets that you've had over the last years, and you're not helping yourself with a 2.13 increase.
Thanks for your comments. Thanks for your comments, Mark. I guess what I would just reiterate is, where are we going to get it? We've got, our fund balance is down, state grant revenues are down. Where we would get it? So if we had to do that, it's an increase in taxes. So do folks in town want their taxes to go up higher than inflation? I've been on my board for 12 years, or will be on this board for 12 years when I'm done with this term. I've never voted for a tax increase that's been higher inflation. I've never voted for a tax increase that's been higher inflation and I never will. But if the taxpayers of Suffield feel that we want to invest in a way that would require taxes higher than inflation, then that's their prerogative. And that's, I think, Mark, what you're kind of saying, and that's, that's okay. And I appreciate your comments. So with that, um, I want to, I know we're kind of going back and forth, some adversarial comment, you know, and that's okay. I think, I want people to be passionate about, you know, their points and their comments on the budget. I appreciate that from both sides. What I'd like to do is kind of get through, does anybody have any key questions? We can, if folks have questions, I want to make sure we're getting to all the questions. If folks have comments, if they want to hold, let's get to folks that have actual questions on the budget, then we can answer those. And then we'll get to all those that have comments. So does anybody have an actual question? Okay, go ahead.
This is Kristen Allard, 1167 Mountain Road. I just want to know if somebody could provide the specifics behind the pay to play. Like how much is it per student? Is it capped? Is it capped by kid? Is it capped by family? How's it worked in the past?
Yeah. I think based on the Board of Ed discussion, that's yet to be determined, but I'll let the Board of Ed folks speak to that.
Because we did not vote on anything at this point in time and, um, anything that we discussed was really just hypothesizing what we would do and how we would account for the changes. No decision has been made on that, even in terms of, you know, is it just sports? Is it just the high school? Where is it? None of that, um, has been discussed at that, this point in time because again, the turnaround was rather quick. Uh, we will be thoughtful in, um, those discussions. There will obviously be, um, some, uh, areas in which there'll be a sliding scale for any child that cannot afford it. I will say this as well, that, um, this is not something that the board wanted to do. I will say, I played sports all my life. I ended up getting a scholarship to a college, a D1 college, and so sports is huge in my life. And it allowed me to get an education that has served me well. And, um, however, what educates me is the teachers that are in that classroom. And so I believe that the thing that least impacts our children is those educators that are in our buildings. And at this point in time, this, this board is choosing not to cut them. And that, I also believe that the whole child, that, that we have to look at the whole child, both in music and arts and in sports. However, desperate times take and call for desperate measures, and so that's why we chose to do this. Um, and so those details will be shared openly with the public. There will be a policy put in place if the budget remains the same. That will explain, uh, the nuances of the system, but it will most certainly be, um, not punitive for any child that cannot afford or any family that cannot afford that. There will be situations in there that adjust for that. Um, and that's all we can say right now. But thank you for the question.
Thanks, Sue. I think, was there one over here? Thought I saw. Okay. Any other questions on the budget? Okay. Seeing none, are there, now we can go back to any comments on the budget if folks have other comments. Go ahead. I think the mic's right back there.
So Michael Sepko, 18 Southstones for West Suffield, also Vice Chair of the Board of, of Ed. I, I've heard over the last three years, um, many references to the amount of, of teachers and the students, and there seems to be some type of a relationship that's, that's being contrived there to come up with the cost per student, and there is. The problem is, is that we live in a new world. We are not in the same place that we were 10 years ago. We have a completely different dynamic with special ed. And I think what the equation that the Board of Finance seems to be drawing to is starting to become more and more invalid every year that we move on. We've already heard about the cost of special ed increases. Is that in your equation? Are the other costs that are starting to skyrocket, um, in that equation that you measure the amount of students to the amount of teachers? We live in a different world and I encourage you to consider that, um, when we continue to make references to the amount of, of teachers and students because I don't think it's invalid and it's becoming more and more invalid every year. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, can go back there. Okay. Any other comments? Got to come in up here. Right behind you.
I am a-
Name and address for the record.
My name is Cameron Aldridge and 4 Kane Street. And I am a student at McAllister Intermediate School. I'm a fifth grader and 11-year-old girl. And it is a shame, I repeat, it is a shame that kids are not enjoying school anymore, at least in my grade, because we, we just can't understand anymore because some kids, we need to have hands-on things. And at least in my classroom, we don't have as many hand-on, hands-on things to work with. And there are kids in my class that do, like, they cannot understand things because my teacher sometimes will not be understanding enough to help them or they will not have enough, they're just not passionate about their job. And those kind of teachers need to be replaced with better teachers so that kids can get their knowledge that they need to have to have the best career that they could have in their life. And it's not fair to students that they can't have an enjoyable education just because the teacher isn't passionate about their job.
Thank you. I want to commend you, young lady, for stepping up and speaking and having the courage to do that. Thank you so much. I'll go over here.
Hi, Pamela Hardy, 63, Hydrange Lane. I didn't get anything prepared today, but I do want to say, you know, I've been coming to these meetings for the last probably eight years since my son's been in school. And every year we hear that the majority of the budget goes to insurance and increase in salaries. And I just feel, how are we ever going to get ahead? And I feel like I say this every year, but, you know, I get it, we have to do that, but I feel like the teachers, kudos to them, they must be doing great things because we are moving forward, but I feel like we're not moving really far enough ahead to get these kids where they need to be and to be with these other towns that we want to be with. I don't think our level that we're at, the DIRG report you said, we're still very low. We want to get ahead. So I feel like we have to support the budget. I would say add more to the budget, you know, and nobody else would agree with that, but we're never going to get ahead if we don't put the money in. I get you don't want to increase our taxes, but then maybe we cut somewhere else. You know, we spent all this money on all these other projects. Maybe we need to really look at education first. You talk to anybody who's moved to Suffield, or probably 80% of the people will say, I moved here for the education, for their kids. I think everybody could agree with that. I don't think that we're delivering with what everybody's expecting when they're moving to the town. So I do support it and I hope we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Hang on. Let's make sure we get other folks before we do repeats. Anybody that, go ahead.
Um, one part is a, oh, sorry, Valerie Aldridge, 4 Kane Street.
Thank you.
It's my daughter. And, um, someone spoke earlier, I can't remember her name, maybe it was Jen or Melissa. She said that she believes that the 4.3, I believe, percent of the special needs kids are probably moving to this town for an education. There, is that data that you've collected? Or are you just assuming people, um, parents who have special needs children, they're moving to the town? And that's pretty much it. My other, my daughter kind of coming in. And also when she's, saying her teacher's not passionate, she has a great teacher, but it's more so, um, I think that she feels like she is scoring 90 percentile nationally on the test. We moved from another area two years ago, Massachusetts actually. And, um, and she feels as if that she would like to learn more, or like the teacher told me that, um, even if like she, her tests have said she should be at eighth grade level in certain things, and she was told that, she just couldn't give my daughter those things because she doesn't have them. That's it.
Do you want to, okay.
I think what I said was, uh, someone had asked, why is the special ed population rising? And I gave a number of reasons. Do I have cold hard facts on that? No, but when you look at the number of kids at the very young age that are coming in, there are more special needs kids, you know, which could be due to being identified, but we also know, I have heard just through talks through the town, that, that parents do come here, um, because they feel it's a more affluent town, which might be able to provide more services. And I will say, I was one of them with a special needs student.
Go ahead, back in the, back and then I think, oh, you can give a call.
Yeah. And actually, it's brief, but I just wanted to comment on, test scores have been referenced a number of times, and I just want to encourage people, also our board and our administration, to continue communicating those as, as robustly as possible because in many ways, a lot of our results are tremendous. Just recently, the high school was in top ranked with AP scores. Uh, our AP offerings have doubled in the last several years. Um, so in terms of what we're offering to our students, and these things don't come cheaply. But, uh, test scores are complex and, and oftentimes our results have been very, very strong. So let's note that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, back there.
Yeah, I just have one more, one more question.
Scott Gilmarten.
Scott Gilmarten, 759 Hale Street. By the way, full disclosure, my wife's a second grade teacher in West Hartford. And with that as a reference for me, I'm just wondering, how do our salaries for teachers compare to some of the other school systems, which may be highly regarded? Um, in my wife's case, for example, um, I don't know this, the exact dollars, but she's actually paid less and she's a tenured teacher, I believe, than a similar position would be in Suffield. How do we, how do we rank, uh, with, you know, some other towns that are, uh, well-regarded? For example, West Hartford or Simsbury, Granby? How do we compare?
Okay, I think Bill's going to take that.
And again, I don't have that data right in front of me, but we do review that data, particularly when we're doing teaching negotiations, which we did last fall. We're in the middle. I mean, when you look at, for Hartford County, when you look at our DIRG, that's what we compare us to. We're, you know, across those, at the low end and at the high end, um, we're, we're somewhere in the middle of, of, of the salary ranges.
Okay. Seeing none, I'll, I'll, okay.
Brian, Brian.
You need a mic.
43 Mysteria Lane. I'm here as both a parent and a member of the Board of Education. I'll make a comment that'd be very brief. I mirror a lot of the, um, comments that were made this evening. You've heard advocates of our education system. You've seen a good turnout of our community and I think that the message has been overwhelming and clear, well-articulated, that the town of Suffield wants to see a greater investment in our Board of Education, in our students, and have better vision for the future, less a focus on the individual numbers and dollars, though you're all very capable of doing that. We appreciate your skill set in doing so, but we need to have greater vision for the future of our students if we want to see growth, we want to see improvement. So I would challenge you to please consider, discuss, and come back to us with something more in keeping with what the town of Suffield is asking for you for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions that folks have? Okay. Seeing none, do I hear, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Who's making the motion? Mr. Cost, do I hear a second? Second, Eric Harrington. Okay. All in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you guys so much and make sure you come out on the 8th to the town meeting.